Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Laws of 1975, this meeting notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on May 15, 2018, and has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue of May 18, 2018. All municipal clerks of the township and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified, and the requirements of posting of notices have been met on May 15, 2018. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 18, 2019? Discussion? None? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Capiola?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Frankhausen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ladd?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Mr. Astolfo?
Yes.
Communications are on file in the office of the Board Secretary. Reports? Superintendent, please?
Thank you, Mr. Astolfo. So, welcome everyone to one of our three student recognition ceremonies that occur throughout the course of the year. We're gonna call the six high schools up, one at a time, to go through some of the unbelievable accolades and accomplishments that our students have really earned over the past couple of months. I think if you stick around for it, which we would ask you to do, to watch all six, you'll be duly impressed with sort of the magnitude of what our students accomplished in this district in any given season, in any given quarter. It's really phenomenal. And I'd invite the board to come down off of the podium, because the first component of this are some video accolades. So, the Monmouth County Guidance Supervisors Association sponsors an award each year that's known as the Caring Awards. And we're gonna recognize those six individuals. That's one individual from each high school, first and foremost. I'll call Mr. Dillon, my Director of Guidance and Operations, to the podium for that.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. First of all, congratulations to all the students and the parents here in the audience tonight. These accolades are obviously well-deserved. Gives me great pleasure to recognize one senior from each of our six high schools who has earned the Monmouth County Guidance Directors Caring Award. On Thursday, March 21st, at Brookdale Community College, one graduating senior from each Freehold Regional High School was awarded the Monmouth County Guidance Directors Caring Award for demonstrating exceptional caring and compassion to a cause, group, or program during their high school career. These committed and exceptional students were nominated by their counselors. What I'd like to do is show you the videos that these students have put together. I think you'll be extremely impressed. At the end of the videos, I'd like to call each of these six awardees up to receive a medal and to be congratulated by their principal.
Hi, my name is Kayla Hankins. I'm a senior at Coltsneck High School, class of 2019. I would first like to thank my guidance counselor, Ms. Van De Boos, the rest of the guidance staff at Coltsneck, and all of my teachers that have recognized me for this award today. In Coltsneck High School, I tried to get involved in as many clubs and activities as I could. Being on varsity softball showed me a lot about teamwork. I am also a peer leader, which provides me with opportunities to get involved in my community. After joining Coop's connection and participating in the Best State Foundation, I enjoyed working with special needs kids and volunteering. The most important part of my high school career was taking on the leadership role as president for Students Against Distracted Decisions, also known as SAD. In this club, we plan activities to raise awareness of the conflicts and obstacles students may face throughout their lives. One example of one of our activities is Exit Day, where we highlight the dangers of distracted driving. Another is the Drunk Gobbo Foul Shot Challenge, to emphasize that you only get one shot in life. We continue to give PSAs on texting and driving and the dangers of vaping. Also, last year, we created a video showing the student body about the necessity of seatbelt wearing. This year, we made a video showing how to safely share the road with others. I'm so thankful to be receiving this award, and I would like to thank Coltsneck High School for providing you with the opportunity to get involved.
Hi, my name is Lyda Lockwood. First, thank you, Miss Bailey, my guidance counselor, for nominating me, and thank you to the Freehold High School Administration for giving me this wonderful opportunity. Most recently, I have dedicated times to the Central New Jersey Out of the Darkness Walk from Thompson Park in Lynncliff, New Jersey, to raise awareness about mental illness and recognize the people we have lost to suicide. I have also enjoyed helping with many events like a team at my elementary school, including after-school theater, clubs, and dances. As a martial artist for 14 years, I have participated in nearly fundraisers to support local charities, which is the March Adise. I raise money to prevent birth defects premature birth and increase availability and affordability for women's health services. We broke 10,000 boards and raised just about as much money. My little sister Lisa and I were adopted from Lince, Vietnam. Eventually, my family began doing charity work there. It was under our own chain called Vietnam Children of Global Connection. For nine years, we spent two weeks, two months each year volunteering there. My responsibility is to grow my size. We've supported an orphanage to give the children better living conditions, and have provided clean-filled water for the tampon and primary school, and developed a well for the local villages to smaller schools. Here, our food-seated dock program has served over 47,000 hot lunch to young students. Our light-powered program provided to school and local families with over 2,700 chickens, while they fresh eggs in the school garden we have supported to provide them with veggies and herbs too. We also gave the students 100 brand-new bikes to make the long journey from home to school each year. I've also been in the homes of our sponsored families to experience our living conditions. Additionally, I've helped adopt the children and reconnect with their birth families. I love the exchange of compassion and hope for change between me and my family and the people we have helped. I hope I've positively changed their lives as much as they've changed mine. People we have helped are in connection to the place where this board, and I am extremely thankful for the additional love that they've brought into my life. Any chance to help other people is a chance like today.
Hi, my name is Kayla Fittipaldi. I'm a senior from Howell High School, and I'm so grateful to be nominated for the 2019 Monmouth County Caring Award. I'd especially like to thank Mr. Brothman, Mr. Gallatola, and Mrs. Stevenson for nominating me. I was nominated for my work with Howell's Relay for Life event. Relay is a 12-hour fundraising event held every year at Howell High School that benefits the American Cancer Society. My involvement started my freshman year as a committee member and team captain, helping to run events, putting up decorations, and working hard to fundraise towards our goal of $100,000. We ended up raising a little over $115,000, and I instantly fell in love with the event. During my sophomore year, I was asked to serve as a community outreach and team ambassador event lead. I took on this new role and developed a team of ambassadors, as well as worked to plan and organize fundraisers in the event itself. Our event was recognized as a leader on both the state and national level, and we were able to raise over $120,000. As our event continued to grow, so did my love for Relay, and in my junior year, I applied and was chosen to be the co-lead of the Northeast Regional Campus Leadership Team. In addition to my work with Howell's Relay, I helped to lead a team of peer mentors to support other high school and college relays from all over the Northeast. This past August, I was invited to attend the Top Performers Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, and in October, I was named the 2019 Central Jersey Youth Volunteer of the Year. My team was also recognized for fundraising over $14,000 since we started as freshmen. In 2018, we were able to raise over $140,000, and this year, our goal is to hit $160,000. It always amazes me how our Howell family comes together to make Relay the incredible event it is. Over 1,200 students, teachers, and family gather to celebrate our fundraising efforts and work toward a world without cancer. Relay has empowered me with leadership skills and allowed me to meet so many amazing people. In finding Relay for Life, I've found a lifelong passion that positively affects others and proves that by caring about others, we can make a huge impact on the world.
Hi, my name is Andrew Bernstein. I'm a senior at Freehold Township High School. Before I begin, I would like to thank my guidance counselor, Ms. Anderson, for nominating me for the 2019 Monmouth County Caring Award. I would also like to thank the staff of Freehold Township High School for their constant positivity and support. With that said, my philosophy when it comes to volunteering is best answered by life's most persistent and urgent question, according to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and that question is, "What are you doing for others?" Personally, I attempt to always apply this question to my daily actions, especially my volunteer activities. When I was a sophomore in high school, I began volunteering with the local SPCA, which eventually became an organization known as All for Love. The ability to help animals has always been important to me. I strive to provide much-deserved love to these defenseless animals, who often come from neglect and abandonment. We rely on a system of dedicated volunteers who love these animals and provide countless hours of socialization and care. Whether it be an animal or person, the importance of love and kindness can never be understated. Next, one of my most meaningful volunteer activities is my involvement with the Francis Foundation for Kids Fighting Cancer. Cancer has taken its toll on my family, as it has millions of others. I lost my grandfather to prostate cancer, and my grandmother is currently winning her fight with ovarian cancer. Through the Francis Foundation, I participate in the annual Thanksgiving dinner at Jersey Shore Medical Hospital, in which I help to prepare and serve dinner to patients, families, and staff. One of my favorite memories is putting on a ceremonial turkey costume and visiting young patients. The smiles of these young children is one of my gratifying and rewarding experiences. In all, I believe in the philosophy of creating value out of my life by lifting up others and doing what I can to positively impact those around me and my community. I wish to thank you for your time and attention. I hope my words and story have inspired you and prove the necessity for kindness and volunteerism.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sean Chang from Marlboro High School, and I am honored to have been nominated for the 2019 Caring Award. I'd like to thank my principal, Dr. Glickley, the supervisor of the guidance department, Mr. Carina, my own counselor, Susan, as well as all of the counselors at Marlboro High School who voted for me. Now, onto my story. In 2017 and 2018, I and a couple friends traveled to Haiti to do some volunteer work with the Health and Peace Foundation. We helped build and paint local schools for communities that otherwise lacked access to nearby schooling. We even did a church work at Menemah, Hason College, where we taught local students the basics of subjects like biology and accounting. During our trips, we helped deliver care packages like assistance of rice, beans, and oils to families living on the outskirts of the capital, Port-au-Prince. However, the most memorable part was being able to visit the orphans whose education we had helped fundraise in the States. In 2019, we've been planning for a trip to be in the summer. I would have expanded our group size from 10 to 25 people. Unfortunately, I've found more pictures since my phone got, well, destroyed. So, now you get just me. Anyway, I've been involved in Marlboro High School's DECA and FLA for most of my high school career. And this year, I'm proud to have joined Marlboro High School's band program and am currently in the pick orchestra for our school play, where I play the violin. I'm also involved with my school's Leo Club and often go to the local events to volunteer. On the side, I've been debating for the last three years, whether it's whether I have newly revived Walter U. program or with Catwoman Debate. Using my experiences, I have started to lead an after-school of speech and debate club at my local Chinese school, where, to quote Catwoman Debate, "I help youth find their voice." I believe, though, that my most valuable achievement is having evolved myself. And if I can turn myself from an overweight, unconfident, somehow quieter-than-a-us boy into the me now, and, you know, pretty good, anyone can do it. And on that note, I, Sean Chang, signing off.
Once again, thank you to these students who have made significant contributions to their communities, and I know they'll be making contributions as they go up and graduate in only a few short months. I'd like to recognize each of them. When I call your name, if you could come up, shake hands with Mr. Sampson, and then please remain up in the front so we can get one picture with all of our award recipients. From Coltsneck High School, Kayla Hankins. From Freehold High School, Leland Lockwood. From Freehold Township High School, Andrew Bernstein. From Howell High School, Kayla Fittipaldi. From Menalapan High School, Ananya Khadra. And finally, from Marlboro High School, Sean Chang. Sean couldn't be here tonight because he's teaching English to English language learners, so again, serving the community. I'd like to give one last round of applause to our Monmouth County Guidance Directors Caring Award recipients. Thank you, gentlemen. Next, I'd like to call up Mr. Brothman, principal at Howell High School.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As Mr. Dillon said, I'm Mr. Brothman, the prep principal at Howell High School. First, I'd like to thank the Board of Education and Mr. Sampson in central office for allowing us to have an evening like this and acknowledge all these wonderful students. So, to kick things off, this year, we have a National Merit semifinalist at Howell High School. So, a National Merit commended recipient is based on PSAT selection index scores out of 1.6 million entrants into the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Program. These students are in a pool of approximately 34,000 students to be commended in the National Merit Scholarship Program. That represents less than 2% of all PSAT test takers. Howell High School's John Morgan earned the distinction of a semifinalist for the National Merit Scholarship Program. Of those 34,000 students commended in the program, half of them have moved on in the competition. They are the highest-scoring entrance in the state and are eligible to apply to become a National Merit finalist. With Jonathan Morgan, please come up. Next up is the Gold Medal Congressional Award. The Gold Medal Congressional Award winner this year is Ciara De Milo. I'm gonna read a little bit about her before I have her come up. So, participants earn bronze, silver, and gold Congressional Award certificates, and bronze, silver, and gold Congressional Award medals. Each level involves setting goals in four program areas: volunteer, public service, personal development, physical fitness, and exploration. Earning the Congressional Award is a fun and interesting way to get more involved in something you already enjoy and something maybe that you would do for the first time. You move at your own pace, and you either do it by yourself or with a friend. This is not an award for past accomplishments. Instead, it's an honor for achieving your own challenging goals after registering for the program. Ciara has been working for over three years now to achieve this award. She's dedicated to skip all of the medals and all of the certificates to go straight for the gold. This consisted of Ciara getting 400-plus volunteer hours, 200-plus physical fitness hours, 200-plus personal development hours, and a five-day, four-night exploration. Lastly, Ciara will be attending a ceremony in Washington, DC. Ciara, please come up and get your... Okay, at this time, I'd like for... The students from Howell High School are here for Allshore Band and All-State Band. If you please come up and stand in front, and I'll talk about you as you come up. Okay, so, Allshore Symphonic Band members have completed an audition process that competed against all secondary schools in Monmouth and Ocean County. Preparation for this begins late in the summer and continues throughout the school year, while also completing their normal schoolwork and activities. Accomplishing this goal affords students the opportunity to experience performing under local, collegiate, and national level conductors in preparation for the annual concert at Neptune Performing Arts Center. This year's Allshore Band members are Mary Kate Donaway, she plays the piccolo; Melissa Paramonte, flute; Christopher Caprio, clarinet; Annalise Toronto, clarinet; Danny Fisher, bass clarinet, first chair; Nicholas Solarno, trumpet, first chair; Bruce Perez, French horn; David Montegre, trombone; Aiden Van Berger, trombone; Jason Braun, trombone; David Mato, tuba; Casey Russo, clarinet; and Philip Golme, percussion. Next, we have two members that are All-State Band members, and they're up here as well. I'll talk about them in a second. Their names are Nick Solarno and David Montegre. I keep butchering that name. Bass, trombone, and trumpet. So, All-State Band, while having similar preparation requirements to Allshore, is much more competitive. These students must first audition and compete with students from throughout Central New Jersey. If they make it to the region ensemble, they are afforded the opportunity to audition for All-State Band. The All-State Band is conducted by nationally-recognized music educators around the state. The All-State Concert is performed at New Jersey Performing Arts Center in Newark. Congratulations to our All-State and Allshore Band. Okay, you guys can have a seat. Thank you. I'd like to call to the microphone the supervisor of extracurricular activities, Mr. Pete Mian.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate all our students here on all their special accomplishments. It's always great to be up here at this event. We do this three times a year, and it just never ceases to amaze me how spectacular and how wonderful our kids really are. I'm gonna go over some stuff with sports. First, I'd like to call up our boys bowling team. Our bowling team this year was Shore Conference Champions. We also had to celebrate Brian Garafano, who bowled a 300 game. We bowled two 300s this year. Gus Orvath bowled a 300, and then about three weeks later, Brian Garafano bowled a 300. I'd like to call Coach Wetzel up. I don't know how many of the boys are here. I only saw one of them that showed up. We're gonna bring them all up here. Whoever's gonna show, Coach Wetzel. Brian Garafano, who bowled a 300. Gus Orvath, who bowled a 300. Mike Cortenhouse, Jake Hager, Henry Heck, and Jack McCarthy. That's our Shore Conference Champions, boys bowling. Next, I'm gonna call up two young ladies for track and field. These two young ladies were the shot put relay champs, state champs for Group Four indoor. Hannah Rosenmerz and Brianna Wilson. Brianna Wilson is calling the individual state champ for this Group Four, the entire state of New Jersey. Hannah's a pretty special gal here. Last year, she was state champ in the shot. And I'm gonna call her up in a little bit with our cheer team. Hannah Rosenmerz, right here, is a two-time state? Two-time state shot putter, state champion. She's a four-time? Four-time state champ for cheer and a three-time national champ for cheer, which is incredible, I mean, just to think about... I think that she was able to compete in cheer, be a state champ, be a national champ, and also be a state champion in shot put at the same time. It's absolutely incredible. Congratulations. Next, I'm gonna call our cheer team. Our girls' cheer team were state champs. They also went down to Wide World of Sports, ESPN Zone, and Disney, and won a national title there as well. I'm gonna call you girls up. Please line up in front, and we'll give you your medals. Hannah Badamarco, Amanda Bailey, Juliana Barron, Harley Brothman, Gianna Cataldo, Jordan Federusso, Morgan Gonzalez, Kayla Kalovski, Rebecca Maising, Kylie McGowan, Jessica McGee, Alexa Musico, Megan Mylott, Ariella Palmeri, Brianna Palmeri, Angelina Pesci, Allison Pinkert, Grace Quigley, Isabella Ramos, Hannah Rosenmerz, Sofia Saratos, Julia Schneider, Angelina Saletti, Gianna Tomano, Olivia Torciello, and Kayla Walsh. I give you our 2019 New Jersey State Champs. Congratulations, ladies. Next, I'd like to call to today's, our wrestling team. Our wrestling team fell a little short this year at states. We lost by eight points. They were Shore Conference Champions, though. They did a tremendous job. A great group of athletes. Still looking forward to them doing some great things in the future. This year, we won our 14th straight A-North title. Quite an accomplishment. They've been dominating for years and years and years. I'm gonna call them up by weight class and say a little bit about each one. At 106, junior Ethan Lipson. This year, he was 31 and 9. Career: 66 wins, 17 losses. He was second in District 25, fourth in Region 7, and finished in the top 16 in State of New Jersey. Congratulations, Ethan. 113-pound sophomore Kyle Mace, 19 and 11, 24 and 13 on his career. At 120 pounds, 10th grader James McGee, 17 and 8. Career: 17 and 8. Congratulations. Congratulations. At 126 pounds, sophomore Nico Malone, he was 30 and 10. His career record is 64 and 17. He took first place in the Shore Conference Tournament, second in District 25, fourth in Region 7, and he was a New Jersey State Qualifier. At 132 pounds, freshman Nick Akway, 7 and 9, 7 and 9 on his career. At 138 pounds, Senior Darby Dietrich. This year, he was 38 and 4. He has a career record of 156 wins, 21 losses. He was first place in the Shore Conference Tournament, first place in District 25, first place Region 7, finished top 12 in the State of New Jersey. 145 pounds, Senior Pierce Gomez. This year, he was 12 and 15, with a career record of 23 and 19. At 152 pounds, sophomore Paul Jacob. This year, he's 33 and 8. He has a career record of 67 and 15. He was first place Shore Conference Tournament, first place District 25, second place Region 7, finished in the top 24 in the State of New Jersey. At 160 pounds, Senior Xavier Kelly. This year, he had a record of 23 and 4. His career, 85 and 21. He finished second place in the Shore Conference Tournament, and third place in District 25. Congratulations to Xavier. At 170 pounds, Junior Shane Reitzma. Had a record this year of 42 and 2. He has a career record of 123 wins, 10 losses. He was first place Shore Conference Tournament, first place District 25, first place Region 7, and finished second place in the State of New Jersey at 170 pounds. At 182 pounds, Senior Christian Murphy. This season, he was 37 and 9. He has a career record of 128 wins, 33 losses. He was second place in the Shore Conference Tournament, first place District 25, second place Region 7, and finished 7th in the State of New Jersey at 182 pounds. Congratulations, Christian. At 195 pounds, Senior Jake Mace. This season, he was 23 and 12. Career record is 33 and 21. Third place District 25, and Region 7 Qualifier. At 220 pounds, Senior Joe Sardina. This season, he was 29 and 10. He has a career record of 57 and 31. He was first place District 25, first place Region 7, and finished in the top 16 in the State of New Jersey at 220 pounds. Congratulations, Joe. And then heavyweight, Junior Justin Wright. This season, he was 21 and 8. He has a career record of 26 and 8. He was fourth place Shore Conference Tournament, second place District 25, and a Region 7 Quarterfinalist. Congratulations, Justin Wright. Ladies and gentlemen, I give you Shore Conference Champions 2019 Wrestling Team. (Applause) Dr. Howell High School, Mr. Sampson.
Okay, we'll call Dr. Angelozzi up from Annapolis High School.
I would first like to thank the Board of Education, the Central Office Administration, and Mr. Sampson for honoring our schools and our students. Additionally, I would like to congratulate all other District Medal recipients. Now we'll get started with the awards from Annapolis High School. I would first like to recognize the following two students for reaching the rank of Eagle Scouts in the Boy Scouts of America. Peter Stormer and Siddharth Kohli. Siddharth did let me know that he would not be here with us this evening. These two young men have mastered the required scouting skills, completed an array of merit badges, completed their Eagle Scout project, and have passed their Eagle Scout Board of Review. Pete, don't go anywhere. Get right here. Don't face the crowd. Good. Peter's Eagle Scout project involved the collection, distribution, and increasing awareness for the Ashley Lauren Foundation. The Ashley Lauren Foundation is a New Jersey-based nonprofit organization that raises money and awareness for childhood cancer. The organization provides the children, as well as their family, with financial support and emotional support through their battle with childhood cancer. The first part of the project included the construction of collection bins to gather gifts, which led to the collection of pajamas, blankets, and new toys for the children. Finally, Peter helped increase awareness for the organization by speaking at various networking events, town meetings, and on a local online radio show. The project culminated in a holiday party for the children and their families that the Ashley Lauren Foundation works with. At the parties, the gifts that Peter collected were distributed to each child, and he expressed that this was his favorite part of the project. For Siddharth's project, he renovated 20 sections of old fencing at Monmouth Battlefield State Park, which was about 100 feet of fence in total. And for those Social Studies teachers in here, the fence indicated the Continental Frontline during the Battle of Monmouth. So, congratulations, Peter, nice job. Now on to the National Merit Scholarship Program finalists from Annapolis High School. Mr. Roberman had mentioned the part of the competition. So to become a finalist, well, let me ask the students to come down first. I'd like Brian Sharon to come down, Talav Binatwala, and William Kang. Talav, I think I've said your name at least eight times at District Medal so far, so I'll get it right by graduation. Out of the 1.6 million entrants in the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Program, the three students are in a pool of approximately 15,000 students to be considered finalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program. That represents the top 1% of all PSAT test takers. Furthermore, William Kang, who could not be with us, is the recipient of a National Merit Scholarship. In the fall, Brian, who is on your left up here, he told me today he's most likely headed to the University of Maryland. And Talav, on your right, is headed to Oxford University. You're good. Thank you. We're good. Thank you. Talav loves when I embarrass him. I would like to now recognize William Kang again, who couldn't be, and Tarun Pillabula Theo, if you're here. No? Okay, those two students were top scorers in the Shore Math League this year. Now I'd like to call up Naga Ganti, Jabin Lang, and Ben Malakaw. Please come down to the front. Two out of three in fifth. These students both scored a perfect 800 in mathematics on their SATs. Unlike some other national exams that are curves, in the math section of the SAT, you can pretty much assume that you must get every question correct to achieve a perfect 800. It is estimated that less than 1% of all test takers score a perfect 800 on the math portion of the SATs. Couple more pictures? Good job. Thank you, guys. I'd now like to call down Steven Aaron, Ryan Sikora, Kayla Lemma, Jessica Deans, and Frank These students represent Annapolis High School's Consumer Bowl team. At the Consumer Bowl, student teams from around the county answer consumer-related questions in a multiple-choice and open-ended format to test their knowledge of consumer issues such as internet fraud and buying and leasing automobiles. I am happy to say that our team won the county-level competition, and this, I believe, is the first time in school history that we've won the Consumer Bowl. So I was a little bit worried, like, is this a fluke? And then they got to the regionals, and they got all the way to the finals where they just narrowly missed out on being Region Champ. So congratulations to our student teams. And finally, for me, anyway, I would now like Elizabeth Pukson to come down to the Elizabeth had another gold medal performance, this time at the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America State Leadership Conference. Every year, more than 700 members of FCC LA gather for this conference, where they demonstrate skills and display projects while enjoying inspirational messages in various workshops. Furthermore, there are state and national competitive events offered to students at the State Leadership Conference. Elizabeth may have joined this club in an effort to increase her leadership abilities, but she has certainly excelled in some other areas as well. She earned a gold medal in the Luncheon Menu Competitive Event. She planned a nutritionally well-balanced luncheon menu, complete with one plated presentation. I will now turn the program over to the Supervisor of Extracurricular Activities from Annapolis High School, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Dr. Angelozzi. First, I would like to thank Mr. Sampson, Central Administration, and the Board of Ed for hosting this night, as well as the Marlboro Administration for putting together such a great event. It's always a true honor to come and see all the recipients and all the amazing things that they have accomplished over the year. Annapolis High School had a phenomenal year in wrestling. Our wrestling team went to the Central Jersey Group V State Championship and came in second place, but we have some truly phenomenal athletes that we would like to honor tonight. First up, Hunter Constoulis. Hunter is a junior. His weight class is 126. His record was 31 and 10. He was the District 20 Champion. He was fourth in the region, and he finished top 24 in the state. Next up is a senior at 132 pounds, Mr. Alex Barron. Alex could make it tonight, but he finished with a record of 43 and 3. He was team captain. He was first in the Nottingham Invitational, first in the Walter Woods Tournament, first in the Shore Conference Tournament. He set a school record for wins. He had 123 career, excuse me, career wins. He was the District 20 Champion. He was second in the region, and he finished top 16 in the state. At 152, is Senior Paul Santinamarco. Paul finished with a record of 38 and 10. He was also first in the Nottingham Invitational. He was a District 20 Champion. He was fourth in the region, and he finished top 12 in the state. At 160, we have a junior, Matt Benedetti. Matt finished 41 and 7. He finished second in the Nottingham Invitational, second in the Shore Conference Tournament. He was a District 20 Champion. He finished second in the region, and he also finished sixth in the State of New Jersey. In addition to these gentlemen, we have some females who put together some phenomenal performances throughout the course of this year, so we would like to honor them as well. One who I don't think could be here tonight, is Jess here tonight?
No.
Okay. Jess Johnson finished number one in the State of New Jersey. She did a phenomenal job. She's only a sophomore. At 136, she finished with a record of 19 and 1. She was first in the Brick Zoo, third in the region, and the first female state champion in school history. Julia Manole, sophomore. Come on down, Ju. Ju's went 11 and 5. She was the Shore Conference Tournament Showcase Champ. She finished third in the region, and she also finished sixth in the state. And last, but certainly not least, our senior, Angelina Vitola. Angelina finished 16 and 4. She was also a Brick Zoo Champ, the Shore Conference Tournament Showcase Champ. She finished second in the region, and she also finished sixth in the state. That concludes the athletic portion from Annapolis High School.
Thank you. We'll call representatives from Free Old Township.
I thank you. I'd like to echo what my predecessors have said in thanking Central Administration, the Board of Education, for putting this evening on, and congratulating all of the students and their families that are being recognized this evening. I'm Adam Busadia, I'm the Supervisor of Extracurricular Activities at Free Old Township High School. Mrs. Higley echoes my sentiments about congratulations to all the families and students as she could not be here this evening. First of all, we are going to call the students from Free Old Township High School that are National Merit Commended Scholars. So please make your way to the front. Free Old Township High School had four students that were National Merit Commended Scholars. Those students are Kelly Buca, Anna Taganova, Evan Nastrovich, and Andrew Quinnlin. Andrew and Kelly are making their way to the front, we see their medals. Congratulations to both of you. Anna's on her way up. Evan unfortunately could not be here this evening, but congratulations to all four. As Dr. Angelozzi previously mentioned, the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, or FCC LA for short, held their state competition in March. Free Old Township High School had five young ladies that earned the most prestigious award given out by the FCC LA, the Gold Award. I'd like to invite those girls to the front to receive their district medal at this time. Those five young ladies are Chloe Conroy, Jessica Israeloff, Brielle Clavak, Kayla Davis, Thank you, ladies. Congratulations. Now, Free Old Township High School had 20, 20 members of our band earn Allshore Symphonic Band honors. Will all of those students in attendance this evening please make their way to the front at this time? Those 20 students are Jessica Hackenson, flute and principal piccolo; Andy Balla, flute; Andrew Solaro, principal oboe and bassoon; Brian Gibbons, clarinet; Daniel Ealing, clarinet; John Hayward, clarinet; Taylor Stanley, clarinet; Kaylee Hoffman, bass clarinet; Sean Tu, alto saxophone; Maggie Erhardt, principal baritone saxophone; Kevin Arizapana, trumpet; Hadley Shacter, French horn; Simon Clark, French horn; Michael Boni, trombone; Julia Feldman, trombone; Douglas Luke... Boni, trombone; Julia Feldman, trombone; Douglas Luke, principal bass trombone and trombone; Anna DePass, tuba; James Harper, battery percussion; Emily Guinea, principal timpani; and Paige Giraki, French horn. Round of applause for those two students. Kevin Arizapana, step forward for a moment. Michael Boni and James Harper, if they're in attendance, please step forward as well. I'm asking these gentlemen to step forward because not only were these gentlemen on the Allshore Symphonic Band, they also earned Allshore honors for the Jazz Band, so congratulations to them. Andrew Solaro, would you also take a step forward? Andrew is the closest to me here on my left. In addition to earning Allshore Symphonic Band honors, Andrew earned All-State honors with the bassoon. For all of their efforts, these students are going to be able to partake in various concerts highlighting the Allshore and All-State bands, and I would like to note that Freehold Township High School had the most total representation of any school in the Short Conference on the Allshore Band, so congratulations again to all of these students. Thank you all. Congratulations. All right. Is Anna Ma in attendance? All right, I'll quickly say Anna Ma entered herself in the New Jersey Distinguished Young Woman Competition and earned that honor as New Jersey's Distinguished Young Woman of 2019. That earned her a scholarship, and she will have the opportunity to compete for the national title of Distinguished Young Woman in June, so congratulations to Anna, even though she cannot be here today. Moving on to athletics, we have one wrestler that we're going to recognize this evening, Christian Mangini. Please make your way to the front. Christian finished the season at 23 and 12. He started the year third place in the Old Bridge Icebreaker. He finished the season in fitting fashion as a senior, as the District 21 Champion in the 138-pound weight class, coming from the 5 seed, which is rather unprecedented at the high school level to come from that seed and have to wrestle. He had to defeat the top seed at some point before the finals to even get there. He led the team in pinfalls, qualified for the region tournament. Congratulations, Christian. All right. Our track and field team had a number of accomplishments during their indoor seasons. I don't know if the ladies are here, Isabel Franc and Sophia Yun. If you ladies are here, please make your way to the front. The girls teamed up as our high jump relay. They won the county relay championship and the Group Four State Championship. Sophia also won the individual county championship in the high jump, and Isabel was named first team Allshore, so although they're not here, congratulations to those young ladies. I saw, I see all four of them. Will our 4x400-meter relay team make their way to the front? Our men's 4x400-meter relay team. Justin Leonard, Parker Sheridan, Tyler Kelly, and Rob Lee. These gentlemen, together, won the Central Jersey Group Four Championship Race in the 4x400-meter relay. Congratulations, gentlemen. Tyler, in particular, I'd like to point out, will be continuing his cross-country and track and field career at Rutgers University in the fall. Now, I'll hold up, I'll let them hang out up here as one of their teammates comes on up. Nick Lundberg, make your way to the front, please. As Nick's making his way, I would also like to add, in addition to being part of the 4x400 and going to Rutgers, Tyler was our Short Conference Champion in the 800-meter run. Nick Lundberg was the 3200-meter race champion at both the Short Conference Championships and the Central Jersey Group Four Race, so a two-time 3200-meter race champion in the winter. Nick will be continuing his academic and athletic careers at Fordham in the fall of 2019. Congratulations to five guys. Thank you, and looking forward to what they're going to do with the spring season now. All right. We have a couple of team accomplishments to point out. Will the members of our Central Jersey Group Four Basketball Team come to the front? As they make their way, I'll just read off the entire roster, the entire, not the entire team could be here this evening, but led by Coach Brian Gollum and his assistants, Todd Smith, Matt Hardison, Stephen Talbot, and Dylan Burns, our Central Jersey Group Four Champion Basketball Team is Zach Marilka, Christian Corcione, Greg Phillips, Seth Meisner, Greg Sola, Max Gluck, Kevin Kolinski, Matt Santangelo, Ben Piribasi, Jeremy Thorne, Joel Lardaro, Jace Shapiro, and Zach Oreco. The boys tied for the second-best number of wins in school history with their final record of 24 and 5. They were the A-North Division Champions, advanced to the Final Four of the Short Conference Tournament, losing to the number-one seed and eventual champion Ranny, who was the number-one team in the state of New Jersey with two soon-to-be professional basketball players on their team. However, their crowning achievement was winning the first state sectional title in our school's history with a one-point victory at top seed Trenton Central, and they advanced all the way to the Group Four Championship Game before bowing out to Northeast Side at Rutgers University in the championship game on Sunday afternoon back in March. Congratulations, boys. All right. I know they say usually it's ladies first, but I'll say it's ladies for last. Girls bowling, come on down. This has become a habit by these girls. So as they make their way down, our varsity bowlers, they're all here in their matching state championship jackets, very nice ladies. We have Caitlin Tami, Kristen Pagliaro, Giannis Freecy, Sarah Orenski, Jaden Schaefer, and Tamira White. The girls won their third consecutive division championship, second consecutive county championship, and they tapped off their season with the first-ever group championship in girls' bowling, where they won the Group Three Championship. They ended up the number-two team in the state, so congratulations, girls, and to their coaches, Coach Ripley and Coach Turner. Thank you for a moment. Anna and Sarah Orenski, step forward. Sarah was literally and figuratively the anchor of our lineup. She earned first-team Allshore and first-team All-State honors for her accomplishments. Congratulations, Sarah. Congratulations, girls. We can just again, same time, next to you. All right. We got one more. Thank you, girls, you can go back to your seats. All right. Last but certainly not least, Zach Simon, make your way up to the front. So, I want to take a moment to recognize Zach Simon, who's going to be continuing his education in one of the more noble ways possible. Zach does a lot for Freehold Township High School. Zach Re Simon is our class president. He runs three seasons of cross-country and track. He's my liaison to the NJSIAA with their newly-formed Student Advisor Panel. And through all of that, the reason we are recognizing Zach this evening is because he was recently appointed to become a West Point Cadet, and he will continue his education and begin his preparation to serve our nation. Congratulations, Zach. I know how much you've worked on this. That concludes the program for Freehold Township High School. Thank you again. Congratulations, everyone. Mr. Sampson? Thank you, Mr. Busadia. So, Ju, we'll go with Freehold Borough next.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to, it's been a pretty impressive night. And we'd like to add our own medal winners from Freehold High School. As I'd like to ask the two National Merit finalists to come forward, please. As we're making our way down, Dr. Angelozzi mentions that to be a National Merit finalist, you are in the top 1% of any student who takes the PSAT in that given year in the country. And we have Mitchell Malkoff and Sharun Desgunda. Mitchell, it will be also important to add that both of them also had earned an 800 on their SAT math scores. Mitchell will be attending NJIT, and Sharun Desgunda is going to the Rutgers Combined Medical Program in the fall, so congratulations. Next, I'm going to acknowledge other students. We had 20 students at Freehold High School. Fifteen seniors and five juniors earned a perfect 800 on their SAT. As I gotta tell you, this is an impressive statistic here. I double-checked eight times, I was like, was there an error figured someplace? But there isn't. So as I call your name, and proudly calling your name, would you step forward down to the podium, please? Sean Beckerl, Matt Fredfeller, Nick Broke, Susan Maitland, Dylan Johnson, Jason Liang, Connor Lum, Alexander McInnich, Casey Ostich, Laila Cogan, Mahesh Patel, Maya Patel, Erica Ton, Brian Cleary, David Kim, Anthony Lee, Nathan Schister, and Zunhu. If you could step forward, please. Thank you. I'd like our DECA students and advisor, Ms. Halpin, please, to come to the front. At Freehold High School, DECA is a very big organization. It started about six years ago with Ms. Halpin as the advisor. Our chapter currently has 240 students, and the students who are here tonight have all reached some pretty significant achievements within DECA. When I say your name, would you just take a little step forward so we know who we're talking about? Casey McCutcheon competed in sports and first in marketing at DECA for the last few years. This year, he received first place at the regional competition. Then at the state competition, he competed again in both sports marketing. He qualified to compete also at the national competition in both events, so he's going strong there. The next, Allison Burchetti. She's a three-year member of DECA and has qualified to compete at the state conference all three years. This year, Ally received the New Jersey DECA State Scholarship of $1,500. She will be attending Syracuse University in the fall, majoring in public relations. Matthew Donlin. Matt has been a DECA member since he was a sophomore and has competed at all three state conferences. This year, he won in both of his events at states, hotel lodging, and entrepreneurship promotion program. Matt also won a DECA Central Region Scholarship of $1,000. He will be attending Virginia DECA and majoring in engineering. Isaac Fall. Isaac has been in DECA for two years, and he competes in the human resources category. As a junior, he joined our leadership team, and next year, he will be our chapter president. Mitchell Gagliardo. Michael, sorry. Sorry. Michael Gagliardo. Michael will be continuing the Freehold High School tradition of having a student on the New Jersey DECA State Officer Board. He will serve as the New Jersey DECA State Recording Secretary. And to the advisor, Ms. Halpin, she was awarded the 2019 Outstanding Service Award this year at the DECA State Conference. Every year, this is given to one advisor, only one, who has served between six to 10 years. Ms. Halpin has been the DECA advisor for six years, and as I said, currently, our school has a chapter of 240 students. My colleagues have also mentioned about all that it takes to be an Allshore jazz band, chorus, orchestra, symphonic band, whatever it might be. I have, from Freehold High School, we have five students. If you could come forward, please. As I'm moving forward, I would like to add that all of these students, regardless of what they're trying out for, you have to prepare a solo piece, you have to be able to do scales and sight readings as part of the components of the audition, you have to commit to the rehearsal time, some of which, they tell me, is all over the state, as well as various performance stages. Then, you have to continue to practice the music for the culminating performance that will be given at different schools in the area. So, Allshore Jazz Band, we have Matthew Perkins, Ruwan Gamalot, Harry Alex, and in the All-State Chorus, David Kim. And now, to Mr. Longo, our supervisor of extracurricular activities. Thank you.
Good evening, Mrs. Ju. Good evening, everyone. Once again, I'd like to thank the Board of Education, Mr. Sampson, and Central Administration for providing us this opportunity to celebrate all the amazing students and student athletes that our district has to offer. Freehold High School had a relatively quiet winter season. I won't be calling down a bunch of wrestlers or track teams and things of that nature, but we do have a few individuals we would like to recognize. I'd like to first call down junior Joe Licurcio. Joe was a business runner this past season for our winner track team. Some of his accomplishments at the Monmouth County Championships, he finished in the top 10 in the 800, and he took sixth place in the 1600. At the Short Conference Championships, Joe placed fourth in the 3200, and in the Central Jersey Group Three State Sectionals, he took second in the 1600 and fourth in the 3200. He was also voted a member of our all-district team. One of the main reasons we brought Joe up tonight is Joe broke two of our modern-day school records for Freehold High School in the 1600 and 3200 meter races. Congratulations. Next up, I'll call down Mitchell Malkoff. We were trying to keep him down here, but he took off on us. So Mitchell had a dominant season in the pool this year for Freehold Borough High School and throughout his entire high school career. Mitchell set five school swimming records this past season in the 200 freestyle, 200 individual medley, the 100 fly, the 500 freestyle, and the 100 breaststroke. During the Monmouth County Championships, Mitchell placed second in both the 100 freestyle and the 100 backstroke. Mitchell also qualified for the Short Conference, where he finished third in the 100 freestyle and second in the 100 backstroke. Mitchell qualified the swimming states, but unfortunately, he was unable to attend meet. As Mrs. Ju stated earlier, next year, Mitch will be going to NJIT to either study biology or biomedical engineering, and he will also be swimming for NJIT. Congratulations. And last but certainly not least, this is our, it seems to be our yearly Nico Messina segment of the program. Come on down, Nico. So in case you don't know, Nico is a wrestler for Freehold Borough High School. He is a Jew- He is a junior and he continues to add to his wrestling legacy at Freehold Borough. This year, Nico had another outstanding season. He was a winner of the Mustang Classic Championship. He was first-team All-A-North. He was also voted to the All-Monmouth County Team and second-team Allshore. This past year, Nico scored a three-peat as a district champion and a repeat as a Region Six winner, and he is also a three-time finalist. Nico is a second straight Region Champion, and this also happened to mark Nico's 100th career win. Nico's record now as a junior sits at 102 and 16. This year, in the Atlantic City State Tournament, Nico advanced to the round of 12. He was one round away from placing, and next year, the goal is to obviously be a champion and get himself on the podium. That wraps up Freehold Borough's segment of the program. Congratulations to all the medal recipients and happy holiday season, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Longo. So we go to Colts Neck High School. Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have the administrative team at Colts Neck High School. I'd like to thank Mr. Sampson, Central Administration, and Board of Education for allowing us to recognize our students tonight. Additionally, I would like to congratulate all of our district medal winners from our sister schools. There is really truly a tremendous amount of talent in the regional, and I think it was on display tonight. So we have a few things to go through for Colts Neck High School tonight. First, I would like to bring up our DECA winners. So if I can bring up our DECA students, and I'll talk to you a little bit about them as they come up. Our DECA program continues to improve every year and be one of the most successful programs in the state. Colts Neck High School's DECA chapter participated at the New Jersey DECA High School State Career Development Conference in Atlantic City. Thirty-five of our students were invited to participate in the state event, and through their participation, 11 students earned spots to represent CNHS at the DECA High School International Career Development Conference in Orlando this spring. Of these 11, five won individual state championships or individual state competitions this year. I'd like to recognize them. First, Trevor Ballengal and Parker Ballengal won first place for their franchise business These two have been the driving force of DECA for the last four years where they're graduating, so we're gonna stand to see them go, but they've done a great job for us. Trevor also won second place in his professional selling event, so he placed two places. Eden Dubravsky won first place for her innovation plan. Kristen Vellaverty, first place for professional selling finance. Kristen Hartman, first place quick-serve management plan. Great job to our DECA students. Thank you, guys. Great job. And as Dr. Angelo Lee and Mrs. Jules spoke about earlier, Colts Neck High School is proud to announce that we had two, also two National Merit Scholar finalists. So I'd like to bring up Jacob Koshian and Zoya Pandra. Hopefully Jacob can make it tonight, but we are proud to have Zoya here tonight. Great job, Zoya. Colts Neck High School is also proud to announce that we had several students obtain perfect scores on the SAT as well. Ty Blitzstein, an 800 on the reading SAT. Ty, when you make your way down here, don't go too far, okay? And we also had Dylan Jacobs, an 800 on the math SAT. Nicholas of Elvigi couldn't be here with us tonight. And Brian Pearlstein, did you make it tonight? Brian was on the fence, okay. Brian Pearlstein couldn't make it either, but we'll get them in June. So thank you, gentlemen. Excellent job. Ty, just let it go by the side over there. I'd like to bring out the Colts Neck Mock Trial Team, so if you guys could come down. We'll tell you a little bit about this impressive group. On Thursday, Colts Neck High School defeated Mainland Regional High School to win the 37th Annual Vincent J. Agrucesi High School Mock Trial Championship at the New Jersey State Bar Foundation. Colts Neck High School beat out 216 other teams in the New Jersey competition, and the team will represent the state in the National Mock Trial Championships in Athens, Georgia next month. I gotta tell you, I wish their Thursday was like Law and Order, and these guys were great. It was amazing. But just so you get a little bit of an idea of what they did, the finals were presided over by New Jersey Supreme Court Chief Justice Stuart Rappner and Superior Court Judge Marilyn Clark. These students, and you think about how many attorneys there are in the state of New Jersey, these students got to try a case in front of the New Jersey Supreme Court Justice. It was truly awesome. We'd also like to thank Assistant Monmouth County Prosecutor Bill Vazone for acting as our attorney coach, and Bill is a graduate of the program, so he's a Monmouth County prosecutor now and he came back to actually work with our students. And also, Mrs. Holly Lucarelli, who couldn't be here with us tonight, for acting as the faculty advisor. So I'd like to introduce our students. Alexandria Henderson. Kurt Loomer. Sandra Dalton. Bowie McElhoun. Dennis Abadi. Dylan Cohen. Kadir Lama. Nicholas Fisher. And Ty Blitzstein. Brian Pearlstein is also a member of the team, but he couldn't make it tonight. So I want to say congratulations to our outstanding mock trial team. Congratulations. Thank you, guys. Okay, I would like to bring out Mr. Zwors, our supervisor of extracurricular activities at this time.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Donahue. Thank you, Mr. Sampson. Thank you, Board of Ed. I'm new to this district. I started on March 20th, so this is my first medal ceremony, and I'd just like to tell everybody, this is really impressive and, you know, it's really awesome to be a part of this. At Colts Neck, we had one of, if not one of the most, if not the most, successful winter seasons we've ever had in 20 years. We had three sectional titles, an overall group title, and some excellent individual performances. I'm gonna first start by recognizing four wrestlers who had tremendous seasons. I know at least one of them is here. Hopefully, all four are here. I'll call them down and then I'll say just a little bit about each one. Logan Waller, Luke Rada, Michael Janucci, and Nick Muldaver. The Colts Neck Wrestling Team had a tremendous season. They were the 2019 B-North Division Champs, and they made it all the way to the Central Jersey Group Four Title match where they lost to Jackson Memorial. These gentlemen up here first, Logan Waller at 120 pounds. He was the District 22 Champion. He was a Blue Devil Classic Champion. He placed third at Regions, qualified for Atlantic City, and finished 32 and 8 on the season. Congratulations to him. Luke Rada, who is not here, was a District 22 Champion, a Blue Devil Classic Champion, a Region Six Champion, qualified for Atlantic City, and finished 38 and 3. Mike Janucci, who is not here, he was at 182 pounds, second in Regions, District 22 Champ, Blue Devil Classic Champ, qualified for Atlantic City and finished 25 and 6. And last but not least, Nick Muldaver. He was the District 22 Champion, obviously qualified for Region Six and finished 20 and 12. We'd also like to congratulate the head coach Brett Jankos, who couldn't be here tonight, who was District 22 Coach of the Year, so good job, guys. Next, I'd like to call up the girls bowling team, who I know is here, along with Coach Okay, the Colts Neck Girls Bowling Team won their second consecutive Central Jersey Group Two Championship, and then followed that up with the overall Group Two State Championship. The overall Group Two State Championship is the first ever for bowling in Colts Neck history. The team finished as the number five team ranked in New Jersey. Head coach Mike York, assistant coach Margaret Carl, then we have Victoria Holz, Erica Dugan, Morgan Gitlitz, Gianna Vamonte, and Giuliana Galano. And also, congratulations to Morgan Gitlitz, who was first-team Allshore and first-team Allstate. Good job, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, next, I would like to call up all the members of the girls swim team who are Okay, Colts Neck Girls Swim had a season to remember. The girls were Division Champs, Shore Conference Champions, and also State Sectional Champions. The girls won the school's first-ever sectional title in Central Jersey Group B by defeating Middletown South 93 to 77, a team who was also the defending champion at the Shore Conference Meet until Our Lady Cougars outscored them 287 to 250.5. In the sectional final versus Mid-South, Megan Judge won the 50 and 100 free, Arabella Lee claimed the 100 butterfly and 100 backstroke, and Julia Nappi took the 200 individual medal. Colts Neck was awarded the third seed in the Public B Tournament and beat second-seeded Chatham 98-72 to advance to the Public B Final, where top seeded Moorestown just proved to be too much in the overall group final. Individually speaking, the 200-yard medley relay team of Shannon Judge, Megan Judge, Emma Shaughnessy, and Arabella Lee set a Neptune Pool record as well as a Shore Conference record en route to Shore Conference and Monmouth County Titles. Other Shore Conference winners included Arabella Lee in the 100-yard butterfly, Megan Judge in the 100-yard freestyle, and the 200-yard freestyle relay team of Ashley Anzavino, Shannon Judge, Megan Judge, and Emma Shaughnessy. Megan Judge was also a Monmouth County Champion in both the 50 and 100 free, and was also a part of the Monmouth County Champion 200 Free Relay Team along with Shannon Judge, Emma Shaughnessy, and Ashley Anzavino. All of these Shore Conference winners named here were also first-team Allshore by the Asperg Park Press. Last but not least, a big congratulations to Coach Dennis Brock, who was named NJ.com's New Jersey Girl Swimming Coach of the Year. Alexis Allegra, Alyssa Austin, Arabella Lee, Ashley Anzavino, Carolina Otto, Ella Amster, Emma Shaughnessy, Fiona Fruchman, Gloria Lu, Jessica Robinson, Julia Nappi, Caitlin Gendzer, Caitlin Lee, Cassidy Wiki, Christina Nappi, Leah McHugh, Madison Wei, Mandy Palinsky, Megan Judge, Morgan Hovann, Nicole Dato, Nicole Safokli, Kalina Popkova, Quinn Hoagland, Rachel Howard, Sarah Shaughnessy, Shannon Judge, and Zoya Pandra. Okay, last but not least, I'd like to call down the members of the girls indoor track Some of the girls had a Beat North Divisional Meet today, so I'm gonna have them all here. The Colts Neck Girls Track and Field Team won their first indoor state sectional title this past season. Although they won last spring, this meet took more of a total team effort with major contributions coming from all the event groups. Often, at championship meets, the pressure gets to many athletes and they do not achieve their best. This was not the case with the Colts Neck Girls. In all nine groups, athletes set new personal bests. Athletes of note were Lily Shapiro, who won the 800 by stunning the top-ranked 800-meter runner with a fierce kick, Cameron McCloskey, who placed second in the pole vault with a school-record jump of 10:06, Delia Russo, who placed third and fourth in the 1600 and 3200 respectively, Natalie Shapiro, who placed third in the 3200, Sasha Lerner, who placed fourth in the 55 dash, Ariana Sakoudis, who placed fourth in the 800, Colleen Megaly, who battled through injury to take sixth in the 1600, and the 4x4 relay, who sealed the win by placing third. This relay was made up of Sasha Lerner, Maya Mancini, Lily Shapiro, and Ariana Sakoudis. Also of note individually, congrats to Lily Shapiro, who was first-team Allshore and first-team Allstate in the 800. And here are your girls. Colleen Megaly, Katie Anderson, Maya Mancini, Emily Schulte, Danielle Dipsey, Megan Roder, Lily Shapiro, Kavita Shaw, Delia Russo, Isabella Pecoraro, Cameron McCloskey, Bella Lind, Brielle Longo, Sasha Lerner, Natalie Shapiro, Ariana Sakoudis, Jasmine Bedacardi, Alexa Panaccio, and Katherine Taylor. Congratulations to all our medal winners tonight. Mr. Sampson?
Thank you, Mr. Zwors. And so we'll have our host, Marlborough High School. Good evening. Congratulations to all tonight's district medal recipients and their families. For Marlborough High School, we will begin by presenting medals to the students with us tonight who achieved a perfect score on the math SAT. So I'd like to invite up Matthew Goodman, Vinnie Patel, Tiara Rothie, Rona Shaw, and Riffick Sharman. My colleagues already spoke what a wonderful achievement this is and how rare it is, so excellent job, perfect 800 on the math SAT. Marlborough High School is fortunate to have a large and committed Model United Nations delegation under the leadership of their advisor, Dr. Richard Malik. This past winter, at the 48th Annual YMCA Model United Nations Conference held at the Hershey Lodge and Convention Center from January 4th through January 6th, the Marlborough delegation won several awards, and students were elected to several positions at a conference of over 800 students. So I'll ask the students to come up at this time, and then I'll speak to their specific achievements. Alexis Bonilla, Stephanie Fowler, Joshua Finkelstein, Sanskriti Gupta, and Annalise Wu. So I'll start by saying that there are many other members, obviously, of the delegation that are not here tonight, because they were not, they did not earn a distinction for an individual award, but the delegation as a whole from Marlborough High School received the Outstanding Premier Delegation Award at the conference, so congratulations to the delegation as a whole. And also, Dr. Malik, who is their advisor, he received the Premier Advisor Award at the conference as well, which goes to one advisor amongst all the advisors that are present at the conference, so congratulations to him. So first, when I say your name, please just take a step forward. Alexis Bonilla. Alexis was recognized as the premier diplomat of the Group of 20 and was elected committee chair of the Model UN Group of 20 or G20 Committee. Congratulations. Stephanie Fowler. Stephanie was elected committee chair and Model UN officer of the Social, Humanitarian, and Cultural Committee. Congratulations. Joshua Finkelstein. Joshua was recognized for his outstanding country research paper on politics and security. Congratulations, Joshua. Sanskriti Gupta. Sanskriti was recognized as the premier first-year diplomat of the Environment and Technology. Annalise Wu. Annalise was recognized as the premier first-year diplomat of the A- Annalise was recognized as the premier first-year diplomat of the Asia-Pacific Summit. Congratulations. Congratulations to all our Model UN winners. Well done. We have some students from the Future Business Leaders of America, or FBLA, so I'll call their names and then speak a bit about them. Pavon Chan, Ronak Shah, and Haley Steinberg. Please come up. On Thursday, March 21st, 2019, and Friday, March 22nd, members of the FBLA attended the State Leadership Conference at Harris Conference Center in Atlantic City, New Jersey. Marlboro High School had 12 students earn eligibility to compete at the national competition in San Antonio, which I believe is late June, early July. We had 12 students, I'm sorry, I just said that. Later this year, we have three students who won first place in their respective competitions, and there's other three students with us tonight, so as I, again, when I call your name, just take a step forward. Pavon. Pavon Chan won first place in the spreadsheet application. Congratulations, Pavon. Ronak Shah. Ronak is a second-time state winner, and he won first place in Accounting I. Congratulations. And Haley Steinberg. Haley won first place in Accounting II. Congratulations, Haley. And congratulations to all of our FBLA winners. At this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ryden, our supervisor of extracurricular activities.
Thank you, Dr. Bleegley. First, I'm going to bring down Raul Rana. Raul is a member of our JSA, Junior Statesman of America, and he was unable to make the fall presentation, so he won first place at the Fall JSA Convention. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to call down Katrina Enriquez. Katrina is a member of the Monmouth County Vocational FFA Chapter, and she competed in the State Exposé. She won first place Best in Show for Silks, first place for her Herb Basket, and was recently elected to Chapter Historian. Congratulations, Katrina. Would Matthew Goodman come on down? Matt is a member of our DECA Chapter. This year, we had 10 students that advanced from the state competition to the national competition. Matt was our first-place winner in accounting at the state level. And on to athletics. First, I'd like to recognize Mr. Brad Higginson. Brad Higginson is our girls' basketball coach. Our girls' basketball team finished the season with a record of 23 and 8, where they were the A-North Division Champions. Mr. Higginson was recognized as the Shore Sports Network Girls Basketball Coach of the Year. And would Coach Charlie Frankel come on down? Coach Frankel is a Marlboro graduate. He is our head coach. This year, the team had the best wrestling season in Marlboro High School history with an overall record of 15 and 12. The team made the state tournament for the first time as a team ever in state history. Coach Frankel was recognized as a District 19 Coach of the Year. Mr. Rapley, come on down. Luke Rapley competes for our Winter Track Team, and Luke was named the New Jersey Miles split Allstate Track and Field Member for the Long Jump. And last but not least, Mr. Leo Carnaval. Leo competes for our Swim Team. This year, Leo became the 50-yard freestyle and 100-yard freestyle Monmouth County Champion and Shore Conference Champion, making him the fastest kid in the Shore Conference. Congratulations to Leo. And that concludes Marlboro High School. Have a wonderful evening.
We'll take a two-minute recess, folks.
Okay, we're going to resume the meeting. The first thing I want to do is Chuck's got to finish his report, but before we do that, I'd like Mark to, Mark Disconno, our board attorney, to update the executive session.
Yeah, just for clarity, in addition to items listed, the board also discussed under Item Number Three, Student Discipline Matters. With respect to Item Number Seven, the board discussed Docket Number EDU-00244-219. And there was just an issue on the agenda with respect to Box Number Four. The board did not discuss the negotiations with the Principals Association, but rather did discuss the negotiations with the CICA, which is the Supervisors of Extracurricular Activities. So that was all, Mr. President.
Okay. Chuck, do you want to?
Yeah, so, thank you, Mr. Estes. So just a couple of items to just update folks on. So we continue to advocate regarding the funding issue and the implementation of Senate Bill Two in New Jersey. Couple of things that have happened since the previous meeting that are on the slate to occur. So the Support Our Students Group, of which we're a part of, which there are now approximately 75 school districts, have been, we've been meeting regularly with other organizations across the state. There was a meeting held on April 11th at the NJEA Headquarters in Trenton that involved the New Jersey School Boards, New Jersey ASBO, NJASA, the Support Our Students Group, and a number of other state-level organizations. The outcome of that meeting is that our groups have drafted a joint statement that we'll be making and delivering to Governor Murphy's Office regarding funding. And we will be continuing to advocate across the board. On April 30th is the Senate Budget Hearing in Trenton. There are plans for some significant activity from the districts there at that point in time. It's not a hearing where you can testify, but there will be a very strong presence from members of the Support Our Students Group there at the Senate Budget Hearing. And on May 8th, I am meeting with the representatives from the Department of Education and Commissioner of Education along with Senators Thompson, Assemblyman Dancer, Assemblyman Clifton, to bring some of our concerns to that office as well. As it stands now, and the budget presentation will be April 29th, and Mr. Boyce at our subsequent meeting will go through that in great detail. However, you know, when the budget is intact for this upcoming school year, this subsequent year, however, it looks to be very extreme for us to the tune of upwards of $10 million potentially. I have to hope that the path that we're on regarding funding is altered in some way because it could not have been the intent of the legislators to draft such a swift financial tsunami for as many districts as are facing it currently in the school systems across the state for those of us who have been on the wrong side of S2. And I want to be clear that nobody from this district advocates for any other district to lose aid in order for us to gain aid. No child should be educated at the expense of another in the state of New Jersey. There is, you know, we do feel that there is, there are some funds in that budget, especially long-term. Over the next five years, I believe $100 million has been earmarked for horse racing across the state and things of that nature. And so when we're looking at expenditures like that from the state government, while districts like Freehold Regional High School District, Toms River, Brick, Jackson, Hillsborough are facing tens and tens of millions of dollars in reduction, I can't help but think that that's, that doesn't represent what we would want for our children across the state. So we are going to continue to advocate. We are going to continue to meet with legislators, to testify, to cajole, and to just be a presence. And then ultimately, the community members of the Freehold Regional High School District, I would hope, would exercise their power at the ballot box to demonstrate how they feel about potentially losing millions of dollars in state aid when we're one of the most financially efficient districts in the state of New Jersey. And it will be our role to make sure that those folks understand exactly what those implications are. Thank you.
Well, if I could just add a little bit more to that, Mr. Sampson. At my age, my horse has already run. What this is all about is the children in the district. We saw the accomplishments that they made tonight. I've never seen so many 800s on SATs, and this is the future of our kids. I can't support all the efforts that you do enough, and thank you for continuing on this. We're on the phone on a daily basis talking about the accomplishments of the district, and I would be worried to go in a negative direction. So thank you, and thank you all the board members that are supporting the continued funding of our Freehold Regional District. With that, I'd like to move forward to Board Reports. And I know that we have curriculum and instruction, but if somebody would take that?
Yes, okay. We had met on April 2nd, and there were a few things we talked that we heard about, students' application for early graduation. Then we moved on to hear about the updates in the math program. I think everyone here knows that starting in school year 2021, we're changing the math sequence. Freshmen are going to start with geometry, and then Algebra I and Algebra II will be sophomore and junior year respectively. And our administration has met with the sending districts about this. And there was a lot of evaluation that we did here with respect to grades 6 through E. And we're really doing this to get the students to take credit-bearing math classes in college and feel better prepared for college tests such as the ACT and SAT. So the bottom line is, the consensus is Algebra I and Algebra II will be held back-to-back. Then we moved to discussion on the Career Pathways Grant. We heard about updates and expansion plans. The Web Design Pathway has been implemented at Freehold Borough. In September, a cohort will start in Freehold Township. And then with respect to the Health Professions Pathway, the Year Four Grant was approved to the tune of $100,000, and that money comes from the state of New Jersey. And in September 2020, the Web Design Program will start in Mall Borough. And there's a Health Professions Pathway at Freehold Borough already. Center State continues to be a great partner with us on the Health Professions Program. And ultimately, we're looking to bring the Health Professions Program to Manalapan High School in the future. We talked about the IB Program. It was good to know that all the students, approximately 27, who expressed interest in the program were able to be accommodated in Freehold Township. So now those students will be transferring from their home schools to Freehold Township. And then we wrapped up the meeting basically looking at the magnet program application process. We looked at all the data for the current eighth-grade applicants, and we really got to see each magnet program's results. How many students took the test, how many were successful. We saw how many kids were accepted, how many were on the waiting list. And we also got to see the underlying test data from each of the K through eight districts in the region. And then finally, with respect to curriculum revisions, they're going to be occurring this summer in culinary, AP Government, to math courses. And come August 2019 at our meeting, we'll be approving curriculum adoptions in biology, chemistry, physics, statistics, and one or two others that I failed to take good enough notes on and am missing. But that might be it. So that's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Messenger. I was supposed to be there, but I got stuck in traffic, and I couldn't make it at the end. And thank you for covering all of that. We did not have a finance meeting since the last board meeting. However, our next board meeting will center on finance, and I encourage all of the TV listeners to come out and listen to that finance meeting, which I believe is going to be the most critical meeting that we've had in years and years and years here. So please come out and listen to what Mr. Boyce has to say. I reviewed his budget report, and it's quite outstanding. And I'd like to see his insights on it. We have one more, which is the Policy Committee. Who would like to take that?
I got it. So the Policy Committee met on April 2nd and discussed the four policies and three regulations on tonight's agenda for First Read. None of these changes result in any financial impact to the district. Regulation 2460.8, Special Education, read-appropriate public education, is an existing mandated regulation requiring board action to amend. We typically don't have to vote on regulations, but this is one of those that we do. The changes recommended reflect terminology changes, basically substituting the word "student" or "students" for "pupil" or "pupils", and student safety data system for electronic violence and vandalism reporting system to be consistent with other policy statutes and regulations. Policy 5111, eligibility of non-resident, excuse me, resident, non-resident students and its companion regulation is an existing mandated policy as well. The changes recommended are based on New Jersey Department of Education guidance regarding immigrant students. State law prohibits school districts from refusing to admit students based on their immigration status except in the case of F-1 visa holders who are in the United States for the purpose of pursuing their education. Federal law allows districts to prohibit F-1 visa holders entirely or to permit them to enroll upon payment of full tuition to the enrolling district. We have opted to allow enrollment upon payment of full tuition, and the regulations as well have been reflected to recommend this change. Policy 7430, school safety and its companion regulation is an existing mandated policy that reflects the district's commitment to safeguarding students and staff and updates our reporting requirement for incidents that occur during career or technical education or structured learning experiences. Policy 7440, school district security is an existing mandated policy. It's being amended to reflect a recent legislative change allowing the superintendent to designate a school employee with expertise in school safety and security other than a school administrator to serve as the school safety specialist. That person will be responsible for the supervision and oversight of school safety and security personnel and safety procedures and policies, as well as being a liaison with local law enforcement. Policy 8561, procurement procedures for school nutrition programs is an existing mandated policy being amended to comply with changes to the federal U.S. Department of Agriculture School Nutrition Programs Regulations that occurred in August of 2018. Policy meets again in May, date to be determined.
Very good, and thank you for covering that so concisely and completely. Prior to our public comment, I know Mr. Boyce had just requested that he jump in with some comments. So, Mr. Boyce?
Yes, just one update for the agenda. Item H4, a resolution to be provided at the meeting, which I have in front of me as for a professional service award, insurance broker. This is our property and casualty coverage, which we did in an extensive RPA for. We had seven respondents, five of which we brought in to speak to, and two of us rated and ranked those brokers. Finalized that work today, so we have the following resolution for your consideration tonight. Be resolved at courts with New Jersey Public School Contracts Law, NJSA, 18A, 18A 510. Be resolved that in courts with New Jersey Public School Contracts Law, NJISA 18A-18A510, and NJISA 18A-18A37. The Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education engaged USI Insurance Services National Incorporated as property casualty insurance broker for the period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, in the amount of $50,000 as per the agreement file in the Office of the Board Secretary. This extraordinary unsupportable service contract is being awarded based on the proposal being most advantageous to the district, price and other factors considered, including the firm's experience providing property and casualty insurance services to New Jersey school districts. And the qualifications of the specific personnel assigned to provide services to the Freehold Regional School District. So that is H4, the resolution being presented tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. I would like to start public comment now. We have one resident on the list, and his name is Raj Garidala. If you could, Mr. Garidala, please approach the podium and state your name and the township that you represent, that you come from.
Hi, my name is Raj Garidala. I'm from Marlboro, New Jersey, Marlboro, Marlboro. So basically, I've been coming to the meeting from last summer, and trying to learn more about Board of Education, how it handles, how it works. So I have a question now. Say that examinations are conducted by the administration, whether it is an entrance examination for the magnet programs, or SAT, or AP exams, whatever it is. So, but we don't know how this is conducted and whatever it is. So is there an oversight body that oversees this process, whether this process is conducted right or wrong? So is there an oversight body, or is it independent body that oversees that has an auditing capacity to see whether this process is going right or wrong? Also, is any of the board members are part of that independent body? How does the process work? Sorry, just one second. I want to know.
So, we've gone back and forth for months, Mr. Garidala, and you've insinuated that you know something untoward that happened, but you won't share that with us, so it puts us in a very difficult position. I will say, we have test coordinators at each building that oversee the test security with whatever those protocols are, or whatever that assessment might be. The board is not involved in test security at all in the district.
If, so that those test coordinators are part of the administration, right?
They're part of the faculty and the administration.
So it's still part of the administration, and it's not an independent body?
No.
It is not outside of the administration?
Depending on the test, it could be somebody from the SAT, but it may be somebody who works within the system, who is working for, proctoring for the college board on that given day, depends on the assessment.
What if the administration intentionally compromises the test? We have seen so many cases like SAT in publicly right now, right? Tests have been compromised. So in that case, how does it work?
Mr. Garidala, we have test coordinators that oversee the security of our test. Let me finish. We have test coordinators that oversee the testing procedures, and we have very tight procedures that must be reported out, followed, and monitored, and those folks are responsible for that. If it's an in-district test, we're responsible for our security. If it's an external test, there are other protocols that we must abide by. And then, when you're talking about cheating scandals that are occurring in other places, I can't speak to that. I can only speak to what are the procedures that we follow.
If the administration is not conducting the test to the highest standards, there has to be an independent body, and the board has to be responsible at some point to make administration accountable for their mistakes, right? There ought to be something somewhere.
Mr. Garidala, I'm not going to go back and forth with you, because I think you're being very disingenuous right now at the podium. Because there's other history here, and it's a conversation not for a board meeting. It's a conversation outside of the board meeting, and it's not a public give-and-take. It's an individual concern that you have.
I don't have, I'm just asking a general question, if something is wrong, if I bring an issue, whatever the issue, if the test is compromised?
If I could, Mr. President, I just, I think what Mr. Sampson responded, and I think the point that maybe is being missed, is that it depends on the test. There are oversight bodies on certain tests. It's a district test, then the security and the protocols are being turned over to the district. Without knowing what test you're referring to, it's hard for anybody up here to...
But this is also not the appropriate form. It's not a question and answer on specific testing protocols related to that. That's for the administration to handle offline, Mr. Garidala, which we have done with you to the, with dozens of emails and conversations.
Mr. Sampson, I'm not getting the answers. You know that. You answered for others' test, but you never answered...
But you're asking specific content questions of the test, and we're not inclined to share that with you, Mr. Garidala.
I'm not asking for the, I'm asking, say if an AP examination is compromised, right? Then what are you going to do?
I'm not going to comment other than there's been nothing compromised in our school system, Mr. President.
Any old business? Oh, I just missed it here. May I have a motion to approve Items G1 through K4?
Motion.
Any, oh, a second. Any second?
Motion.
Second, Mr. Bruno. Roll call, Sean?
Mr. Bruno?
Yes, except for on things with G11 and K1, Mr. Sampson and Dr. Hazel, the festival
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes, on everything except H11 and K1 to Dr. Hazel, and this is...
That's G, that's G1.
G1 and K1. K1, Mr. Sampson and Dr. Hazel, and it goes like this.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Backhouser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses? Mr. Acetola?
Any old business? Any members wishing to discuss old business? No? Then we'll move to new business. Any members wishing to discuss new business? No? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
And who's seconded, Mr. Bruno? Okay, excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.